I'm calling this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilman Casarelli?
Here.
Depeña?
Here.
Gresiano?
Here.
Guara Bosco?
Here.
Moldro?
Here.
Valdez?
Here.
And Mayor Melham?
Here.
Congratulations. I... Sunshine Note.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Colleagues Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, in honor of the Sunshine Law, notice that this meeting was published on Thursday, December 26, 2024, the additions of the Bill of Times and Star Review. The Sunshine was complied with by adopted and forwarded to the press, posted in file with the Minister for Clerk, Leanne Resolution, showing the date, time, and place of each meeting. A copy of the Leanne meeting notice has been posted on the township website and also on the board of the board.
Thank you. We're going to just deviate very quickly, and instead of going on to the next portion of the meeting, which is the council caucus work session, we're going to skip ahead to Resolution AA, which is Resolution 143-2025, appointing Councilwoman Naomi Depeña?
Councilwoman.
Councilwoman. That's what I said. I said, "Councilwoman."
It's in the past.
Councilwoman? I can repeat it. Councilwoman Naomi Depeña as Deputy Mayor of the Township of Belleville. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Gresiano?
Yes.
Guara Bosco?
Yes.
Moldro?
Yes.
Valdez?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Congratulations. At this point, I ask the Depeña family to come forward.
This is the Fernandez family.
The Fernandez family. Welcome Fernandeses. And our future mayor there, wearing his mayoral pin, like the pin. I want you to know Naomi, I wear my Dominican blue jacket. And I just do a specific dress for you today. Your husband's wearing all black, but I am wearing the Dominican blue in your honor. Are you ready?
Yes, I am.
I state your name.
I, Naomi Depeña.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of New Jersey.
And the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
To the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I state your name.
I, Naomi Depeña.
Do further solemnly swear.
Do furtherly... A further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully...
I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially.
And justly...
And justly.
Perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of Deputy Mayor.
Of the office of Deputy Mayor.
In the Township of Belleville.
In the Township of Belleville.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. So this is something that we did. We don't have a formal reorganization this year. It's an off-year for the election. And therefore, we... The council has unanimously adopted this resolution. Councilwoman Naomi Depeña has now been sworn in, and as of July 1st, she will formally take her role as Deputy Mayor of Belleville. And I also want to acknowledge, she was not here before, but we have our new superintendent or soon-to-be superintendents here. Thank you, Sarah, for being here, Dr. Alfonso.
That's okay.
Something happened, Naomi, because it's going to go to my phone either, which means...
Yeah, that's okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. This means so much to me. And I'm going to try to do that when I see my little cousins here. I'm going to try to do this without crying. So bear with me, because this... I've been here before, but I've never been here with a second generation, and this matters so much. Thank you to all my council colleagues for voting yes. I know, you know, people feel different ways, but ultimately, we come together and we decide what we want to do for the benefit of the township. And today, when I woke up thinking about getting sworn in as Deputy Mayor, I was thinking of me at the age of five. And that's what I actually wanted to show you, a picture of me growing up in the islands, the daughter of missionaries, the daughter of immigrants, coming to this country, living what I call the reversed American dream, right? My parents came here to the United States and then decided to go back to Dominican Republic as missionaries to serve people, because that's the family that I come from. And having the opportunity to come here at the age of five, I pretended that I spoke English. Now I do. I came here at 16 years old. I learned the language. I educated myself. I went to school. I actually became the first special needs teacher here in the township to speak Spanish. And the work that I did, I realized how much our community needed it. There was no bilingual special needs teacher and just so much need. So I decided to run for council. And to find myself today being appointed as Deputy Mayor is truly a testament to what this country is all about. It's about that ability to grow, the ability to become better, the ability to run for whatever you want to run for and make a difference and have a seat at the table. And I want to say thank you to my family that has supported me and keeps me so grounded. My cousins are my sisters, and they're my friends by choice. And they remind me of what matters. Ultimately, Lucas is like the biggest supporter of Better Belleville and everything we do. So when you think about the decisions that we make and you wonder whether we're doing this, and the mayor knows this, I text him and I always say, "Look at that face and don't let him down." And that is our north. That is how we make decisions. That is how we decide what is right and what is wrong, because they're the ones who are going to live here. And we're far gone. So this is really about that next generation. And to my husband, who, as I always say, gives me wings and also gives me roots, thank you so much. You believe in me and you catch me when I fall apart and also clap for me, so thank you. I love you all and thank you so much. Yes. Did you get a picture of the Depeña? You did?
No, we can't.
Can you help us? Let's just... Mayor, can I have a picture of the Depeña? Oh, she's going to look at it.
I...
Oh, my attention.
She'll be the picture.
Ready? One, two, three. Even though it's a 10.
I'm going to invite the councilmen to stay up here just for a few minutes. We have, as the chief mentioned earlier in the program, we have our assembly person with us, Ms. Carmen Morales. And she has a proclamation on behalf of the General Assembly of the State of New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak this morning. I just want to share a couple of words before I present this citation to our Latina Deputy Mayor. I feel... The way she feels right now is great honor to hold a seat such as prestigious as the Deputy Mayor in a township. I come from parents who came here from Puerto Rico, who always wanted a better life for their children. I always say representation matters. And in a township where majority of the citizens here are Latinos, it is great to see Latinos leading the way. Myself being the first Puerto Rican Latina Assemblywoman in Essex County in 2003 says a lot about where we're heading and where we are right now currently. So I'm proud Latina. I'm proud to serve the township of Belleville. I am a resident here. I am a... I was a teacher and educator here in Belleville. And to be here to support my Latina, powerful, and selfless servant leader. I'm so proud of her. And again, you know, we need to have our children see themselves in the leaders that represent them every single day. So on behalf of myself, Senator Timberlake, Assemblyman Michael Venezia, we're just so very proud of you. We thank you for serving in this township, because it takes a lot to serve. This is a selfless, selfless job. And a lot of times, people don't get the credit that they deserve for stepping up and stepping into these positions. And again, when we do the work, we always have an alignment to the purpose. Our purpose is to serve the people every single day. And I'm just so proud and happy that I get to serve with this wonderful young lady here in this township of Belleville. And I'm going to continue to serve our people here in the township. So again, on behalf of Legislative District 34, we commend you. We're so proud of you. We thank you for serving, and we are here for you.
Can I have the mayor and Dr. Alfonso, please, come up? The first Latina superintendent? And who's the color?
Who's the color?
I got four.
Chief, you.
Congratulations. Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay. Thank you so much.
Council? I say... Congrats to our new Deputy Mayor. Right here.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Just give it time for the Fernandes and the Assemblywoman. Congratulations. Thank you again for being here. You guys can stay for the three-hour meeting if you are. Okay, everybody, moving along. We did the citation. We're moving along with the rest of the agenda. This is our council caucus work session meeting, which means any member of the governing body and/or administration can put items on for discussion. With that being said, these discussions are in and among the various council members and our professionals and invited guests. While you may hear some that interest you, this is not a back-and-forth conversation, but you can most certainly make a comment during public commenting at that portion of the meeting. So without further ado, our current Deputy Mayor... Clock is ticking. Seven days left, I think. Our current Deputy Mayor has two items up. Our first one is technology.
Yes, thank... Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to share with everybody up here that we had some problems last month, I believe, with the technology here. We had some concerns. We brought it forward. The manager now has a quote to fix some... Fix the speakers, the sound, I should say, and also to address the public questions on recording. So in his... In the quote that the manager has, "If the stream does not work, if the internet does not work, if nothing works for some, any reason, it will record locally and we can put it up where we need to put it up following day." So that's what he has in his handprint.
Okay. Sounds good. That's it for technology?
Yes, sir.
Insurance?
Yes. So the question I have on insurance is, Brian, can you provide the council with an update on the JIF? Haven't... We haven't had any updates. I know Council of Belleville used to do it once, and so often haven't had anything. So I don't know if we want to... If, you know... Can you provide an update where we are?
I don't particularly have anything. I don't have one at the meetings. I defer that to the mayor who sits at those meetings and/or Steve gets the updates.
We get the same emails. So I could, next time I get the email, put it on for a council discussion. Brian gets the same... Brian's the alternate. We get the same emails, so...
Well, I was also looking... I was also looking...
I could also find out if you have any questions.
Yes.
Like...
Exactly.
Like what kind of questions? Because I can... I, you know, I... They communicate with me about particular cases, not the overall, you know, status of the township within the JIF. But if you have any questions, I can find out for you.
I do.
Sure.
How many have we... How many settlements have we had? Is one question. The other question is any amounts for those settlements? How many are pending cases? And how many are active cases? The other thing is the dollars. Does the tax... The taxes... Who pays for the JIF? Taxes?
Okay, so the JIF... The... Well, the cases themselves... The township has insurance where the township... The only exposure of the township is $20,000 per case for liability and 20...
It's a deductible.
And it's like a deductible. Or 20... And $20,000 for the defense. So the JIF controls the defense. We pay, obviously... The township pays... The township's taxes pays to belong to the JIF.
Premium. It's like a premium.
It's kind of like a premium.
And it goes into a big fund.
Right. It's a self-insurance.
Generates interest, and that's where it starts.
We're so... What they do is they take a bunch of towns, that's what the JIF Joint Insurance Fund, to spread the risk amongst a lot of towns. Just like our car insurance. Everybody has it. The risks are spread out. It would be... To go to an insurance company for a township would be prohibitive cause. Could never, ever do it. So over the years, JIFs have gotten together, and there's a few of them in the state. And they adjust every claim. They have insurance adjusters. Let's take an insurance company. I can find out how... So when you say pending versus active, you mean actual lawsuits?
Well, they were settlements.
Because there's a lot of... There's a lot of cases that never become anything.
Right.
Right? You don't want to know those, because there's... They don't... Until they actually... Until they actually become a lawsuit, they... They're... All they are is a file. And somebody sends a claim to the township, to Albert. Albert sends it to the JIF. And if nobody... If they never sue, it just dies on the vine. There are cases that are actually pending, lawsuits that have not been settled, that are in court. I can find out how many of those are.
Please.
And I can then find out over the last two years what cases were settled and for how much.
But Tommy, just to answer... I wanted to drill down to your question. That's not the end-all, be-all number. The lawsuit... If you're looking for a number of lawsuits, what we got sued, how many times you got sued, how many times you paid out, the JIF isn't the only pop. Sometimes a JIF declines coverage. Right, Steve?
Oh, yeah.
Not every... So that... Is your question...
Is that about the JIF? Because I just want to understand a little bit more about it.
Yeah, the JIF...
That's not the end-all, be-all.
I know.
Right. The JIF handles, you know, property damage claims.
Mostly slip and fall.
Personal injury claims, car accident, claims of township vehicles, that kind of...
Right.
And then the JIF, on top of that, handles workers' compensation as well. We'll keep those aside. Those are...
Well, yeah, but I would like to know... I would like to know them.
The workers' comp too.
So some of them, Tom, just so you know too, some of them is that's like confidential, where they'll pass it out at the meeting, but then you have to...
You don't get emails that list, whatever. You could look at it at the meeting, then you have to hand it back. And a lot of it's private.
We hear it, but I don't know... We don't... We...
Yeah.
I haven't heard...
Yeah.
Any depth of it, so that's why I'm asking. But then the last question that I had is for premiums. Is... My assumption is premiums look at the year. And if they do, can we get a... Through the... Through Brian to the CFO, can we get something from 2020 to 2025 on the increments? Or what we paid anyways over the last five years?
20 to 25?
Please. Because that premium is paid by... I believe it comes out of taxes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's all. I can see it in the line item in the budget, so a couple of things came up, and I just answered. But thank you.
Yeah, but the overwhelming majority, slipping falls, accidents, and Vinnie's right. We're not at liberty to... A lot of that goes down in executive session, so names and stuff like that.
I don't want the names. I don't want the names.
And all that stuff.
I just don't want to be...
I don't remember what Steve used to share. I know Steve... I don't recall an update from Steve. I know Steve served on the Cyber Liability Committee for the JIF, and he gave us that update. But I don't remember an update. I'll follow that pattern. I don't know what update he ever gave.
He would... I don't think he ever gave his updates about, like, overall, what the cases were, how many there were.
He didn't speak on Cyber Liability.
If there was a particular case that had to be discussed, he would do that in executive session.
Right.
Because you can't discuss... Attending litigation public.
I will say it's eye-opening to sit there and see, you know... You know...
I understand.
If you're trying to pull the... On a snowblower, you dislocate your shoulder, and it's $100,000. It's... Yes.
You'd be surprised how... How, you know, for... Other than putting workers' compensation aside, you'd be surprised because of the protections that public agencies have, public entities have, state, county, municipalities, boards of education. The legislature has passed statutes to protect townships from having to pay like... You know, if you get a car accident, your insurance company's going to pay just because they... It's cheaper for them. Townships don't have to do that, because they're protected by the state statute and have immunities that the individual, private person, doesn't have. So, you know, you'll be... You'd be surprised when you get the list in terms of those kinds of cases, car accidents and fall downs and things like that, how little I've been doing in Bluefield, handling all of that for 30 years. And I can probably say in 30 years, I can count on two hands how many times I actually had a payout because of all the immunities townships have. So... Which is a good thing. Which is a good thing for taxpayers, because taxpayers ultimately are paying them.
Steve, I got a question. Is there anything that affects these premiums? Like the number of payouts we have to do on cases?
So, yeah, you'll find out. And...
It's a big pool, though.
Yeah, but just like any other insurance, you know, if you have claims on your car, you have a lot of car accidents or you have a lot of homeowner's claims, your insurance goes up. Same with the township. They have a lot of claims. Then because of... Which is why we have, you know, safety meetings, right? It's why department heads go to safety meetings, because they're trying to limit accidents amongst employees and limit all that. Limit the expersions. And the JIF... The JIF runs those safety meetings. Because the JIF don't want... Doesn't want to pay out either, right? Because it's their money. It's from their pool. So, yes, the claims... Frequency of claims and things like that. I don't know exactly how the calculation works, but frequency of claims does make a difference in terms of what a particular town is...
Whatever we can do on our end to keep our premium as low as possible.
Well, that's what we do. I mean, the DPW does it. Fire and police constantly have training just to... From getting hurt to prevent their, you know... And to be honest with you, the... Like any other town, I've been doing workers' compensation for the JIF, the metro suburban JIF for... Since I was at Boggs and Hines Office, which was 30 years ago. And the majority of claims, you could... Number one, claims are DPW workers. It was why they're listing things.
DPW traffic.
DPW... DPW workers are... We just had to train them, right? Office employees are less. And I know for a fact that a lot of Bellevils... Bellevils Police and Fire do not have, generally, a lot of claims, considering what they're up against every day, right?
So you're going to be no beating?
Yep. I get it.
Okay, Steve. Thank you.
Next up is Councilman Guara Bosco. His property on Mill and Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. The property was, I know, utilized by the late Marie Burke that had the gazebo put in there to have weddings. And I'm not sure how many we've had since that's been built. So I was wondering, and I believe... Chief might be able to help me, that gazebo was a memorial of the Venero and the Minniki family.
Yeah.
that gazebo was a memorial of the Venero and the Minaquie family.
My brother Anthony passed away.
Yes, yes.
He built it, I think.
Yeah, I believe that was the case. And maybe we could utilize that part of the property. You know, I'm just going to throw some ideas out. I don't know if the citizens, the mayor or the council has any suggestions. Maybe for the senior citizens, for a bocce court, still have the gazebo in memory of your late brother and the Venero family now that we've lost Anthony Venero Senior. I believe they would help out in whatever we need there. If anybody else has suggestions for that piece of property, because I hate to see the property go to waste. I grew up right over there. So I'm thinking, Dr. Avahoff, maybe the seniors for a bocce court, some tables, some chairs, or maybe a little park for the kids if there's a grant passable.
We do have a bocce court.
Is there?
At the senior center.
We had a bocce court.
We had a bocce court.
We have it, we had it.
I believe maybe the senior citizens could be able to utilize that property or, or children in the area. So just some suggestions if anybody thinks of anything, Mayor, if you have as any counsel, that's all I have on that.
Try to bring new life into it, basically?
I'd like to utilize it instead of just having a piece of property that up and on and not being utilized in the memory of whoever it was meant to be.
Okay, well, maybe I can work with the rector, rector and come up with maybe some more other professionals. Come up with a couple of ideas and you guys can talk about what you think would be best.
Thank you.
And give it a try.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is stadium parking, a very interesting, timely topic.
I know, I know this is a touchy subject and I know we visited this before, but I did get some, received some phone calls during the rainy season, during baseball, from some elderly people who wanted to pull in that lot and watch their grandchild, their nephew play. It's always locked. It's a handicap spot. Not everybody has a handicap, is in a wheelchair. I mean, even to go to the field, the gates are never open, which is not the town or, you know. But just open that lot and I know, and Dr. Avahoff is gonna say okay. Football team has to utilize that freshman locker room and carry stuff a mile around to use, if it's, if it's only utilized from dusk to dawn, which was the intent, I thought. But it's always locked. And I've gotten a few phone calls on this. I know it's not you, Chief.
We've had that, the council...
We've been there and maybe put a spot, not just for handicap, but the handicap person parks there, has to walk three miles to the other side of the field to watch the graduation or, or anything their child's playing.
It's not conducive to handicap.
It's not conducive to handicap at all unless we open the freshman side field, the cupboard in the middle, but to walk to the other end. Again, not everybody's in a wheelchair. Some people have breathing problems, back problems, leg problems.
Some people just want to park there and watch a game in the JV field.
Yeah, especially the elderly. That's it.
I've never put more energy into four parking spots in eight years.
And I didn't want to revisit it again.
We are revisiting it because I just was visiting it again with the director and manager this past weekend as to when it was closed again for another event.
Just to...
Why, why, I have a simple, I mean, maybe I made it too simple. Take down the chains and just let it be a parking lot. If somebody parks there who doesn't belong there, all the police, a ticket of summer.
And just, you need a spot for the Board of Education?
Why, why, the obsession with locking up four parking spots is unfathomable to me.
The obsession with these four parking spots is unfathomable to me. So we've been through this time to time in between resident complaints, between council complaints, between what the police department has to deal with. They get a lot of calls at night where people hanging out there overnight. So their request was to...
People can hang out, people can hang out at the high school because it's not chained up. There's a parking lot right around the corner that people can hang out at. We don't block that off. Why are we blocking all these four parking spots?
Because they're hanging out in that. So the point being is that the, the right and the school will have the authority to open it whenever they need it. They can open it for their staff during the day to bring stuff in, take it out, whatever they need that for. And they can open it during any kind of event that's going on. They can utilize it.
They don't open it, that's the problem. You're not kidding us.
There is a clip, there's a clip on the fence and the pails themselves weigh about five pounds. They can pick them up either with one arm and move them. So if they don't want to do that, if the police are okay with leaving it open all the time, which I don't think that that's what we really wanted.
The parking lot around the block is open all the time.
It's one person complaining, one person complains.
There's not.
Yes, there is. There's one person complaining.
I was complaining this weekend.
We have a habit, no, no, one person's complaining about cars parked there. I don't care what parks there. One person complains and we have a crazy habit of catering to one person here.
No, I'm trying to cater to everybody who's trying to park there.
I want to cater to the handicapped.
The charging rules, right?
We can, if the council would like it, we can open it and get rid of the gates.
The council never said put gates. When did the council vote to close the parking lot?
Now you can say it. If you want to open all the time, you can say it, open it. And don't close it off and the complaints were...
They're gonna call, the same person's gonna call, people are in there, the handicaps...
Can we do like a trial run and see what issues arise, if any?
Then let's lock it from after seven, after, after the, the field is shut down, lock it again.
Kids are hanging there, we'll shag them away. But if someone's parked there...
You know what, they live near a school. That's gonna happen.
I agree. And I, I, I counsel all the...
I just, I got the corner.
There's one person complaining, one person.
The other thing that we need to clear up too is who uses the spaces. Are they always going to be for senior, for handicap spaces? Or can authorized personnel park them?
Did we, did we tackle this when we voted to create the handicap ordinance and name those spots?
Are they created? They're not created.
All right, so correct me if I'm wrong, when, when we have those handicap, there's a football game, they still have to walk to the other side because the freshman locker room is never open that first gate to come down the stairs and walk.
You mean the tunnel, the tunnel you mean?
No, before it, right next to the parking lot is the freshman football locker room. That gate is never open. So that handicap person, and they, and again, they don't have to be in a wheelchair. Can take their time down the stairs and sit, sit in on this, you know, the thirty yard line and watch a game. They don't necessarily, or they could walk if they don't have, you know, the thing opens in the... And that's only for football games. Technically, they only open that for football games.
Dr. Len will tell you like his workers to park there while they're doing work at the field.
But they also choose during the games. So are we letting them park there during the games?
You only have four high school football games a year and you have a few junior bucks football. That's the only time that concession is going to be open. The other side of that gate should be open for them to, to come down that field too. They don't have to walk that far.
So we're gonna go back to the original way, so it's handled as free for all. Somebody?
Whatever the council agrees on.
I think the only biggest problem is people were parking there overnight, I think. And then they weren't moving, then they weren't moving their cars. So they were neighbors.
And they were backing in and they were putting their headlights right this gentleman's window and they were hanging out.
Yeah, and that's, and then he would call the police.
He'd call cops, the cops shoot away. That's not unlike any other place in Belville. So what, what is the problem with that?
We can do that. We can follow it. You guys, you guys, you know, give me the record. How we want to handle these spaces.
I'm fine, try it out.
So authorized personnel, whenever any feels.
Does this mean we're gonna put out new signs up that say authorized personnel only? Or we're gonna keep it red?
We ended up with four handicap spaces.
Well, we can do that, Mr. Mayor. With respect, Dr. Len did put some signs up and then there was a complaint about that. Where are the handicap spots?
And the council wanted to take them down. Where do we want to land with this guy?
We had only one spot for handicap and that wasn't good enough either.
Mom, I would do a couple of handicap, one personnel.
There you go. Couple handicap, one personnel. Would you hand the gas bottle to the right distance? That's not true.
It's only your football team that needs to use it.
Comes down, just open.
Or the person, they may need to use it. I, I, I...
It's not a little bowl, it's uh...
If I may, so we only have for handicap, wheelchair accessibility. We only have the entrance, we only have the entrance is opening the garage door, right? Why don't we look at this holistically and say, maybe it's time ramps go on each side or some way to get people, you know, laying with handicapped, and then make it accessible, I'm sorry, make it accessible on both sides instead of just one.
Accessibility is part of the next part.
That's part of the group plans we have, Councilman.
My point, so my, 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 exactly. So, oh, we put it right before the horse or just, just make it, do what, do what you want to do and say, hey, in such a time, this is going to be fixed at downtown.
Easiest thing to do is let people park there.
Try that. Ready, sort it out.
Okay, that's it. Next up, Councilman Velez reviewing the master plan for 2025 and beyond.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, there's been a lot of discussion in the town over the last few years about development. But I think the best, you know, way forward is to actually educate people. I think a lot of people don't understand that the council actually does not vote on the master plan. It's actually the planning board. I think it's really important that, you know, like we spoke about in past meetings, having more workshops and really talking about what the master plan is, different trends that are going in the area and basically, you know, allowing our professionals, you know, to do what they do best and talk about, you know, different things going on in terms of development. So we did already have these conversations, but I'm kind of just bringing it back up. I mean, Brian, you could probably, you know, expand on that.
What, what are we proposing at short?
Just basically having workshops, because we spoke about in the past, having workshops for the planning board and talking about the master plan. But I don't think that went any further. So just following up on that.
The master plan is an overarching document. It gives a broad spectrum of what the town wants to see, what the planning board basically wants to see the town focus on over the next decade. Every ten years it's reimagined. The planning board adopts this, they, they go out, they get the, the professional, we have professional planners do this. We gave them broad overview that we wanted to modernize, that we wanted to make sure that we were covering all the current issues and economic climates. And they help bring us into the future, basically, this thing. So it talks about a bunch of different things like open space, historic preservation, creating parking, creating senior housing, doing better infrastructure, stormwater management, green initiatives, complete streets, public spaces, beautification. It addresses everything. The only thing, place where it talks about either development or height or densities, it basically says for the township to maintain the current densities, meaning the way the whole town is, is, is built, it can stay that way, except for a few limited areas where our downtowns are, which is where you see most of that development happening. It might pick out a few different properties that are underutilized or not creating the type of tax dollars that are going to benefit the town that, you know, try to be development on them and get, bring some activity and life to them. Oh, it's, it's just an overarching thing. It also helps us guide our ordinances. Now, when we do our ordinances, we set them and we set them to try and bring in attention, right? Because at the end of the day, economic development is what drives Belville's, the future of Belville, our community, how people invest here and investment means tax dollars to us. Our town suffers when people are not investing in. So one of the things, you know, we did talk about doing at the planning board level and the zoning board level, because I think they could be educated a lot more on the document itself too. We get new members over time.
That's actually what I was gonna say. I'm not quite sure the general public needs education. I think we would start with the council members, the council members. Who don't realize how it works. The planning board creates the master plan. They dictate the master plan. This governing body has no say in that. So much so that every time we do a zoning amendment, it actually goes to the planning board for consistency review to make sure it's our version of inordinance or zoning warrants is consistent with their master plan. They're the ones in charge, not this governing body.
What we could do is...
I don't know what educating the public would do in that, but...
No, I think more along the lines of what we can do, I've talked about this as educating our boards. If we have work sessions, we'll bring the planners in and discuss the elements of the master plan and how the ordinances affect that and how we're in line, how different projects do this and why we are doing certain things. And if we have those work sessions, of course, we'll be able to, the public and council members, where they too can go sit and be educated on what the master plan really is and what it does and what our ordinances mean, I follow up on that. You guys vote on ordinances to make sure that they're in compliance with that master plan and that we're guiding the future of Belville, making sure that people are investing here.
Right, our ordinances go to the planning board to make sure it's consistent.
Yes, there's a consistency with the ordinances.
We don't dictate the planning board.
If you don't take that, if you don't take that, the recommendation of the planning board, you need like a super majority to vote on that ordinance. So it makes it even harder for you guys.
But if, if we do an ordinance that's not considered the planning board, it has to come back to us for super majority. So the planning board dictates the, the master plan. That's up for review every ten years or so.
My law, it is my law.
And just so, you know, just so the public knows too, we do have an update coming to the ordinances that are going, it's a little bit more conservative, kind of tightening up the belt on some of the stuff that we did, things that we learn along the way and things that we can say we can slow down on. So that's going to be coming, you know, approach your desks in the next couple of months. And I think everybody's going to be happy with it.
When was the last update to the master plan?
Two thousand...
Twenty-one is the latest.
Update, yes. The last reevaluation was eighteen.
End of eighteen, December.
So ten years from now. Okay, anybody else?
Let's follow up real quick in terms of, you brought up a good point about the accessibility. Would we be able to livestream those meetings or at least, you know, make on the website a page specifically for that and put some resources up just so that the public can access those?
I'm gonna bounce that back to the deputy mayor. I believe with the updated systems we're putting in place, we're gonna be able to livestream them.
There's currently no reason why zoning board, planning board are not livestreaming. They just don't want to do it.
Nobody's, I guess nobody's there to use the equipment, don't want to touch the equipment, whatever.
Secretaries make a lot of money.
It's probably easier just to record it and then put it up later, whatever.
And now if this goes through, you, you don't need to stream, it will record. The system goes on to record it, you can take it and you can embed it where you want to put it.
Yeah, that's good.
At either side.
I think that's great.
We don't need to pay people to come to meetings to livestream.
You already paid them to not do it.
So let's just record it.
Hit a button. They don't want to hit a button. Okay, next up, report to the manager.
Hold on one second. Livestream and workshops.
Okay, the manager's done, next.
You wish. All right, lengthy as usual. This month the township submitted for the TAP grant for 1.5 million, which if received, will help us fully upgrade Raylock Parkway with beautification and pedestrian safety features. We will also be applying for phase four of the Safe Streets to Transit Ramp Lifting in the amount of $900,000, which will be used to continue the beautification and pedestrian safety upgrades already seen started on Franklin Street. The resolution of support is on the agenda tonight for this one. Thank you again to Gabby and Vinnie and our, our grant team for working on all these. Just a reminder for our COA funds, the township has managed several million in our COA fund thanks to development around the town that we can give back to our community in the form of forgivable grants up to $22,000 to income qualifying homeowners who are in need of repairs and upgrades of their homes. Through conversations at the planning board and other around town, I've heard complaints from residents that, that if you sell your home in less than ten years, you have to pay it back. That is true, but the work completed will most likely have raised the sales value of your home by even more than what's owed, still yielding the owner a net positive on the sale. If you qualify, it's a win no matter what way you split it. I encourage more residents to look into it and I encourage this council to speak to your constituents more about the program. For more details, see Jackie in the clerk's office. Last week we had some bad news regarding the air conditioning, the senior building. Last Thursday the system failed and we unfortunately had to shut the building down. And Mr. Friday bingo. This is, and we don't ever want to do that. We don't want to do that. So this is something that we were aware of though. We're working on quotes for a new system, but time wasn't on our side. Regardless, thanks to Bobby and his great DPW team, they sorted out and sold a temporary system, which after working all weekend, the system is up and running and we were able to reopen the senior building on Monday. Proud to say, not another day of bingo will be missed. The permanent replacement system is ordered and it will be installed over the next few weeks. Thank you again to the DPW. Speaking of the seniors clubs, we now have eight applicants for the senior advisory board. I will have those applications sent to the council tomorrow for review. You guys let me know how you would like to work out the selection process and we can put up resolutions appointing them at the, one of the next meetings coming up. So however we want to deal with those, I don't know the best way to do it, that is, send them out.
Well, I think, I think you're, I think Dr. Len's recommendations are really helpful. Because not everybody on the mayor council is going to know these individuals. So maybe just a couple of sentences about each one, what, what he knows about them and then the mayor.
Sorry, I could buy Lenny, I like it. Oh, we did a full guy.
Yeah, no, that wasn't my intention.
Ah, sorry, Merle, you didn't make the cup.
You were, you, you are more likely to have known these people in your dealings with them now.
You did a full guy.
Maybe, maybe you could do that.
Sounds good.
We won't publish every day.
The work that the police roof is well underway. We were told it should be all done and watered tight by Thursday this week. The DPW is already working on quotes for the repairs to the rest of the building that was damaged by the leaking, the ceilings, the bathrooms, the lock rooms, et cetera. Once we are sure that the leaks are stopped, we will begin the rest of the work. This, the senior building, are important reminders that we can't Band-Aid and neglect our facilities. The town must make it a priority to invest in all of our infrastructure and financially plan for these things over time. Nothing in this town should ever be allowed to deteriorate to such levels. From this point on, we really must start this type of planning. Kicking the can down the road only hurts our ability to serve our residents and ends up costing us more in the end. So you're gonna hear more about us from infrastructure.
No, we should have our engineer do a five-year plan, ten-year plan. And I don't know, Frank, do we usually do more than ten years or no? No, so it's like a five-year and a ten-year.
Some of these are big, like even the air conditioning system in this building, oh, the guts are, they're no good. They're only thirty years old. They weren't good when they were put in. So they were obsolete, they were obsolete when we, when we put them in. So looking into that and spending a little money goes a long way.
And a planned project is always cheaper than an emergency project.
Exactly.
I'm sorry, and you mentioned the air conditioning, I'm gonna jump on that because if you walk through this building, this building and other buildings, I'm sorry, we have all of those temporary air conditions. And we're spending more money on electric than looks like, you know, bad. Any offices, I know, and it's not conducive for our employees. So why do we bond for everything else? Why do we bond and get it done right once? I mean, that's, that would be my push because, I mean, you go to the clerk's office, it's facing, it's facing the community. It's not, it's not conducive for the employees. You go to the fire department, it's the same thing. You go to your office, it's the same thing. It's not...
They're not great, they don't work. I have one in my office.
Right.
And they run, it runs all day with the door closed and it's still going there.
Right, and then, and then, and then I just jump on this side and say, when you're gonna invent, when we're gonna invest into something like this, invest into a BMS system, which actually can control, you have controls, and it automatically, it goes on, it goes off. It has all of the bells and whistles. Not till you shut it off and then it goes hot. And then you gotta crank it up and you gotta wait three days to get back to swing.
Yeah, no, it's off or on.
Yeah, let's look at this lucidly and let's invest into it for our employees. I really think we need to do that.
I think that's all part of phase two, right?
Yeah, and, and there's gonna be some other facilities that we're going to put recommendations in for too as well. Some of your stuff, that's, I think everybody's gonna be interested in. So anyway, continuing on infrastructure, this Thursday the parking spaces on Franklin Street will be getting striped. That means wherever we just metered Franklin Street, that means there's gonna be stripes so everybody knows where the parking spots are. So we'll get the most out of the parking there. More importantly, 191 Belmont will be paved in strike over in the next few weeks. I hope by the next council meeting, we'll have already been announcing the opening of the first Silver Lake Municipal Parking Lot.
So that's a question a little break. Are we gonna open that parking lot for use while the construction is gonna go on and whatever we're doing to the building there?
Um, yeah, we're, we're gonna open that right away.
Okay, good.
Because I think, yeah, I, I think we're gonna have to do that. And again, the interior work on the building, we're not sure yet.
We're not really doing much on the exterior, right? So.
Over the next, we still have to get the architectural plans together, then we're gonna have to get cost estimates and we're gonna have to go out to bid most likely unless we can use a COA.
The parking lot will be open in use.
Parking lot's gonna be open right away. I think the businesses are really gonna value having that. So hopefully before the next council meeting, everybody will be invited to open that. Okay, next up, professionals are still working on the grandstand rehab and renovation projects at the municipal stadium. We have a meeting planned this week to review the concept plans, cost estimates and phasing plan for the work. Remember, we're getting $2 million for this from Green Acres. Fairway Park, that's been everybody's burden and a nightmare for us. We apologize for the delays on this project, but the unforeseen issue with the grants have really set us back. Those grants will now have to be forfeit and the work being done on the township line alone. With that said, we have the contractor, we had the contractor gather the updated costs and are working out the final details with our professionals on what we can and cannot do without the grant funding. Our CFO is here and will provide some details on that shortly. We hope to have a resolution, a resolution to this and start, restart the project soon. Once, once we do that, we're gonna try to get the, the park itself opened immediately and we'll just block off the rest and, you know, we'll, we'll go from there. Other than that, for the fairway area, the pump station materials have been ordered. So that means as soon as we get the, the materials for that pump station, we're gonna start work on the pump station. So hopefully have some more updates on that soon. Lastly, for infrastructure, we will be paving Kimball Sanford and Forest this week. In July, once school is out, we will be paving Harrison, Mill Street and Belville Ave from Washington to Main and Cortlandt Street, Bellevista to Girardamon. I received a few questions about future pavings from the council. So I asked the engineer and the update is, so these are the things that are in the harbor that they just have to go out to bid. Granite Street from Belville Ave to William Street, Berkeley Ave, Franklin Ave to Parker, Lloyd Place, Hornblower to Union, Sycamore Drive, Hickory to Teston, to Hand, Union Ave to Adelaide, Essex, Washington Ave to Linden, Charles Street the entire length with after the water main replacement and Center Street after the water main replacement. Finally, Main Street from Nutley to the North Quarter will be doing the whole thing. The railroad cleanup is still going on in the way. It's almost done. There's a few more barricades they're gonna put up, but thank you, Murishenko. It's looking great already. The rent department had a notice they wanted to give out. Everyone, every interested resident should create a community pass account so that they can stay up to date with all the youth, adult and senior activities. They can do so on our website or they can call the rec directly during business hours. Finally, if you receive your tax bill, you will find our notice to all residents in there. This is a great reference document for all residents and property owners in town, reminding them of the rules and processes our town has. We believe if we are going to enforce the ordinances in Belville, we have to make sure our residents are educated, aware of those ordinances. And our teams are still out there dealing with all violations from oversignage to overcrowding, from illegal parking to illegal apartments and from eye grass to cats. We are enforcing, we are enforcing that our residents and businesses alike follow our town laws. These rules are in place to ensure a clean, safe and desirable environment for all in Belville. Over the years we laxed on them and I don't think it was, it did any good for maintaining our neighborhoods and great places to be, which should always be our goal. We will continue to work hard to keep Belville clean in a place we can all be proud of. We will continue to work hard to keep Belleville clean in a place we can all be proud of. Before I give it back to the mayor, I'm done. I'm done. I just want to turn it over to the CFO for two seconds because he's going to give us a little more detail on what fairway is going to cost us and he has some positive notes on our man's.
You said two seconds, right?
If I may, before you go there, Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
With the pump station, Brian?
Yes.
Because I was near and dear to this when we first... The past four years. The problem was, not the hardware, I mean, that ended up being the problem, but the electric is actually in... We're talking about fairway, right? The electric is in the pump area. So when the water comes up to the top, the electric goes off. So I don't know if that was addressed and that electric has to be aboned and moved out. So that does not happen because electric goes out, the pump don't work, so we could have all the new hardware.
I will check.
So just check it out.
Yeah, they had a plan to move it up, as Bobby knows, they had a plan to move it up the street a little bit where it doesn't dip down. It was going to be...
Just making sure.
Move a little bit up the street.
Just making sure. Thank you.
Frank, quickly.
The original plan, original contract amount for fairway would have been $975,000. That would have been funded completely by developers' contributions, so there was no cost to the town. The downsized brings us down to seven... And grants on top there. The downsides in the project brings us down to $728,000. Of that, $109,000 is... Represents supplies and materials that were purchased in advance by the contractor that we were going to have to phone tap to pay for. To exit out of this contract, we're going to go pick this stuff up or have it, if it's returnable, we're going to have it returned and get a credit for it. But either way, we're going to be made as whole as much as possible and we'll let our DPW do as much as they install or reform out the work to complete the project. So the... If you digitalize originally, the left side of fairway will be pretty much completed the way it was intended. The right side, the field, is going to be the part that won't be completed by the contractor. That'll be completed by us. We purchased a lot of the supplies already. So we're landing fairly well with fairway.
Perfect.
Okay.
To answer.
Oh. Another thing, Mayor, I left up on the dais was our official statement that we had been working on about three months.
His name is Finance, just so you know.
It culminates about three months.
Continue, Finance, go ahead.
The culmination of about three months worth of work and that ended today. We offered... We have an offering of 42 million, just north of $42 million in bond anticipation notes. That included about $40,000 of renewals from old, paydowns and add-ons, new cash resulted in a net issuance of $42 million. We ended up with a winning bid of 3.44% in that interest cost and $293,000 premium paid on that. So we were the only... Jersey Sim was the only other sale today and there were comparable DARS, so I think we did pretty well and awarded the bid and we'll close on the 7th of July. So that will clean up and fund all of our projects through 12/31/24. The only items that'll be open are the 25s.
Great job, Finance. All right, moving along. Next item on the agenda is the report of the mayor. Hold on. So I just want to go through some upcoming events that we have coming up. First thing that we have is going to be next Thursday, July 3rd, is going to be our Independence Day celebration that starts at 6 o'clock with family fun, inflatables, blowups, food trucks, all kinds of great stuff at the municipal stadium. Fireworks begin at dusk. Usually it's around 9:15 or so. There will be thousands of people at the stadium. We always have the overflow in the Horseshoe driveway. This year, we're programming the Horseshoe driveway a bit with a second DJ is going to be there, a few more food trucks and some porta potties are going to be there because we do get a huge crowd. We're expecting a really, really nice show. The very next day is July 4th, which is Friday. We do our traditional July 4th festivities, which includes morning yoga, thanks to Signature Fitness at Number Seven School. After that, a brief, quick seven morning at the Dustreform Church to honor our 68 Revolutionary War veterans that are buried there. And then what's becoming a tradition in Belleville now, I think it's at noon is going to be our annual, now annual color run at the municipal stadium. After that, you're free to barbecue up. A week after that is going to be our first summer concert, our summer concerts are every single Thursday, being that our fireworks are Thursday, July 3rd. Our very first summer concert starts a week after that, which is Thursday, July 10th. And we do start off with probably one of the best concerts of the year. It's going to be our freestyle night featuring George LaMonte and TKA. There are going to be thousands of people there. We already had a walkthrough meeting at least about July 3rd and July 4th, and I'm sure the police and the manager's office is going to be all over this because there's going to be a lot of people there. After that, you can check the township website for the rest of the summer concert schedule. Hosters will be up this week. Big banner across the town will be up this week. They'll have the full schedule. Past events real quick, the police department did their community bike ride, always a great event. Again, the police department did walk to school with a cop, which is very nice in June. The rec department did a first event of its kind, Father's Day. That really backed up because we had a really nice Mother's Day event. So between a Mother's Day event and a first or a Father's Day event, it was cold and rainy and we had a lot of extra hot dogs, but Dr. Lenny ate his full share of them and he tried to do his best to make a dent, but we had a lot left over still. We're going to carry them forward. So speaking of new programs that the rec is doing, I actually attended the arts program. It was a program that I know Councilwoman Naomi DePena was very instrumental in starting a couple of years ago. That program is back. It's also really geared toward special needs. And then last, the library hosted a nice Juneteenth event. And then we had a private community member actually do a Juneteenth block party, which was this past Saturday. News real quick, congratulations to FMBA for winning the Little League World Series, even though I played for PBA. Still PBA chief, just so you know. But FMBA took it this year. Congratulations to those boys. I know the manager gave a quick update on the law enforcement building, but as you see, the construction is commencing or has commenced. And that's only phase one. Phase two is we make everything underneath it right. And I have the promise and commitment of the manager and CFO that we're going to make sure that happens. You saw our brand-new superintendent here earlier, but he was also in town hall yesterday. Myself and the chief had the opportunity to spend some time with him, wide-ranging conversations just about his vision for the school. Very nice to have our next superintendent come here and not just tell us his vision or talk to the chief about security, but ask our opinion about some things, which was really nice. Then took the opportunity to walk him around some different departments so he can meet some of the key people he'll be working with, wishing him all the best as he takes the helm on July 1st. The manager gave a senior center update. We have temporary cooling solutions in there now. A permanent solution is on the way. Grade of Arts Showcase, info's on the website. Rec department's doing a lot of new programs. Speaking of new programs, summer sports programs, boxing, volleyball, football, and basketball clinics are being offered by the rec department. And last but not least, fall sports registration is now open. That is it for the mayor's report. Next item on the agenda is... Approval amendments.
Yep, two, February 25th and March 25th.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Are we doing individual or for both?
For both. Both.
Councilmember Casaroli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Borabasco?
Yes.
Moldro?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Malhan?
Yes.
And miniature approval.
Next item, communications.
Received a letter from Mayor Michael Malhan in support of the Belleville Public Schools application to the New Jersey Department of Education for NITA? Is it NITA?
I already jumped in.
NITA and Lowry 21st Century Community Learning Centers for $21 grant.
Sounds good. Next item on the agenda is ordinance, ordinance 29-25, ordinance for possible adoption. I'm going to read it though. Ordinance approving the agreement between the Township of Belleville and 260 Washington Avenue Urban Renewal LLC under NJSA 40A colon 20-1. I believe we had last meeting, we had adjourned this to this meeting. You forwarded the notice for today's meeting. I don't believe we're going to adjourn this today. I think we're going to table it?
Table it.
If we table it...
We need a motion.
Right, but if we... I just want to be clear. If we table it and it's on the table July 1st, it dies. If we adjourn it, it actually carries forward. We want it to die. So it'll start all over again. Table it.
Make a motion to table.
Somebody's got a motion.
Got it. All right, sounds like they're ready. We already got a motion to table and a second to table, which means that it'll technically be on the table until July 1st. July 1st, council technically resets, this dies. If it's going to come again, we'll start the process from scratch all over again. Good. We have a motion made and second to table. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casaroli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Borabasco?
Yes.
Moldro?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Malhan?
Yes.
So ordinance 29-25 is tabled.
Ordinance 32-25, ordinance for possible adoption. Ordinance amending chapter 40, article 1, entitled Recreation Fees. Need a motion to open public commenting. Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casaroli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Borabasco?
Yes.
Moldro?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Malhan?
Yes, we are now open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Eddie, Mr. Antoni?
Yes, so you're going to tell me you were going to eliminate recreation fees?
No.
No, what are you doing?
If we were going to eliminate recreation fees, Mr. Antoni, I believe you'd be the first one here saying that your taxes would go up and you were against it. But since we're not doing that, you're a young society.
I read the letter to the end. I testified here for years. I am willing to pay for free recreation for our children in my tax dollars. I put that in writing and I've spoken at this microphone dozens and dozens of times.
Okay, so I answered your question.
You got money for everything else, but that little thing less than 1% of the budget, you are making the families pay. So what are you doing with this ordinance now?
I believe these fees are for the new... I don't have the full package. The new senior fees. So the seniors currently pay a fee. They've always paid a fee. The senior clubs don't pay a fee?
They want $2?
No, no. No, $5.
Okay, so that's incorrect to say the senior clubs don't pay because they do pay. And Mr. Frank Antoni, these are, since the township is now taking over the senior clubs, we have to pass an ordinance to amend our fees to include that fee into the municipal fee now.
Well, the way I understood it, the seniors were paying money to their club, either Tuesday or Friday club, to projects that they wanted to do. So now you're telling me the town is going to impose a fee besides what they're paying to the...
No, Mr. Antoni, you've been here for every meeting. You have not missed a meeting, so you know exactly what's going on. The township has taken over the senior clubs with the blessing, I should say, of the Tuesday club and the Friday club. We were welcomed to take them over because they don't want to run the administration side of it, the insurance side of it, the raffle licenses and everything else. So the township, through our new rec director, is now taking that over and we are working with every single senior currently in leadership, which is what you heard in the manager's report about the senior advisory committee. The township is helping them out by taking over the running, the day-to-day running of those two clubs.
So who pays the fee? Any senior wants to go to, has to pay a fee?
Just like they do now.
And what is the fee? First of all, let's get it straight. They're not paying a fee to the township.
They were not.
They're paying them to their individual club.
They're not going to anymore.
All right. So the town was in charge of them. These are people that wanted to join that particular club and participate in whatever programs they wanted to do.
Now, if they want to join that particular club, they join those programs, the township will pay for.
So now every citizen that wants to go there, if you were a citizen, you were able to go there, you didn't have to be a member of the club. You could go to the senior club.
Be a member and pay for that debt.
So now the town is going to tax you.
Mr. Antoni, we're just swapping out the club for the township.
And if the club didn't want you, you couldn't go.
Never stopped coming up right there, the tax and tax and tax.
Okay, next. Mr. Frank Antoni.
Philomena Frank Antoni.
Okay, I need you on the microphone, I'm sorry.
Philomena Frank Antoni, I would just like to know what the fees are.
I believe we just said $25.
For everybody?
For the year.
That's for Belleville residents?
Belleville residents.
And what are you doing with people that are not Belleville residents?
$50.
$50?
For the year.
For the year. You're going to lose a lot of people coming to the club, I'll tell you that.
Man. Not bad. Not bad.
Hi, good evening. My name is Joe Sweeney.
Your name and address first.
My name is Joe Sweeney, Espino Pecamin. I live at 96 Emmett Street, okay? I'm standing here as the recording secretary of the Tri-City Indian American Club, okay? We've been existent, we've been the longest social club there is. Now, with this being said, we are also coming over to the township with the club diminishing our club and becoming under the township. However, my problem is this. $25 for Belleville residents, great, wonderful. $50 for non-residents. And that, I get it, however, a lot of the members were born and raised in our town, okay? Now they had to move to other municipalities because that's what they could have afforded with senior housing. We all want this to be success, I'm sure as all of you do as well. However, by doing that with the monies, a lot of them are not able to afford it. So I, from the club, are requesting that this be revisited as far as the funds and and make it $25 across the board for everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else in public commenting on this ordinance, this ordinance only? Hearing none, seeing none, anybody on the phones? Anybody on the phones? For this ordinance, this ordinance only? Hearing none, seeing none, any motion to close, move for final adoption?
Motion opposed.
The motion made and second to close, move for final adoption. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Borabasko?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mulheim?
Yes.
Ordinance 3225 is adopted.
Next. Ordinance 33-25. Orders are possible adoption. A bond ordinance to authorize the improvement of Main Street in and by the township of Belville in the county of Essex, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $2,250,000 to pay the cost thereof and to appropriate for a state grant to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Need a motion to open public comment.
Motion.
Okay. The motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Borabasko?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mulheim?
Yes. We are now open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only.
You know this.
Now you've done it.
I was gonna say, she knows. Good evening, criminal violation in 833 Main Street. Okay, so in this lovely ordinance, East Side's my lines being painted, because we all know, that's the first thing on this. What is being done to improve Main Street? Is it cleaning of it? Is it repaving of it?
Yes.
Good answers, I like those answers. Right, okay, so...
Frank, 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 if you're gonna speak, come over here, one of our professionals, and don't hover over her. Use our manners.
Please, I work in healthcare.
I didn't know what he was doing. I didn't realize he was the engineer either, he was gonna be answering his questions, so... What's included?
Everything.
Milling, paving?
Milling, paving, reconstruction where necessary, curb sidewalks, handicap curb cuts, street signs, whatever is necessary.
Painting a line in the middle of the street.
Correct. End to end, and both sides, so whatever needs to be done, is gonna be done.
One of the things too, I think we were gonna try to do is add some sidewalks. One of the things I think we were gonna try to do if we had the funds is add some sidewalks where there were no sidewalks.
That's the only thing that's up in the air for this thing, but we have to do it in curb cuts first.
You know, that's fine. All right, so when all this goes through? Because I know, obviously, Taff Main Street eventually becomes River Road, which I understand is not our responsibility, because it's Nutley. Are you working with Nutley?
No.
No, we cut the line in the middle of the street and we stopped. No, that's what happens.
Right, no, I understand that we're, you know, from point A to point B, but, you know, if you're, we're spending all this money to fix Main Street, wouldn't it be a good idea to say, make a phone call to Nutley and go, "Hey, by the way, we're fixing Main Street. If you guys wanna start at the same time and fix their part of River Road." You know, that would be a suggestion, you know?
The half of it, roughly 50% of this is funded with a one-off grant from the state of New Jersey, their state project fund, not the municipal fund. So this is a one-time deal. We're getting this, it's an opportunity that we're not gonna pass up.
No, no.
And I understand that it would be more efficient and maybe get, you're not gonna get a bigger bank. They're not gonna be as eligible as we are.
Plus, Frank, we want our Main Street in Belville better than Nutley's River Road.
Oh, a little petty about Main Street.
Thank you. Anybody else, sir?
Good evening, everyone, Michael Sheldon, 47th Floyd Street. A moment ago was mentioned that this $2.25 million is to address all of Main Street and to do everything. So I have to ask, does this also include the terrible intersection of Rutgers and Main Street?
So yeah, let me be clear. Our CFO spoke and said the entire Main Street and everything we tweeted. Nobody in the council said that. I didn't say it, the manager didn't say it. That was him that said it. I would've described it a little differently, so to answer your question, we have a project for that intersection. This money's not for that intersection.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify that, because you're probably aware, Mr. Haritz has at recent planning board meetings...
Where, the council, where?
Right, but just for everyone's edification, Mr. Haritz has said at recent planning board meetings that work is actively underway involving the state to finally solve that horrible intersection. So I hope that happens simultaneously with the rest of the Main Street. I hope that the town is engaged. The other thing I wanted to ask, you have five bond ordinances for adoption tonight, totaling a little over $7 million.
I just need you to keep your comments on this ordinance.
Well, this is, so I don't have to get up.
You're gonna have to get up again, I'm sorry.
I just would like to know...
You're not gonna know, because it's not about this ordinance, you're not gonna get an answer.
I would like to know, what is the total bond and note debt Mr. Di Maria happens to have there?
That is a question you could ask during public commenting. I'm sure he'll let her answer.
I'll give him an advance note, so he has time to get that number. But I'd like to know the total bond and note debt with this $7, $7,500,000 that was represented by the five ordinances.
Thank you. Anybody else in public commenting? Clerk.
Yeah, some family out here. Is there anything in this here grant for flood mitigation down on Main Street?
No, this is just the bros. Anybody else? Anybody on the phones? Hearing none, seeing none, any motion to close, move for final adoption?
Rush.
Second.
Motion made and second to close, move for final adoption. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano? Borabasko?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mulheim?
Yes.
Skid Mondo.
It's the deputy mayor, he distracted you. Councilwoman Mondo?
Yes.
And Councilman Rosiano?
Yes.
Yes, ordinance 3225 is adopted.
Ordinance 3425. Orders are possible adoption. A bond ordinance to authorize the improvement of Credit Street from Belville Avenue to Williams Street, Berkeley Avenue from Franklin Avenue Carpenter Street, and Lloyd Place from Hornblower Avenue to Union Avenue in and by the township of Belville in the county of Essex, the state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $1.625 million to pay the cost thereof, to appropriate a state grant to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Need a motion of open public commenting.
Motion.
Okay. The motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Borabasko?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
Mayor Mulheim?
Yes. Public commenting is now open. Anybody on the phones? Hearing none, seeing none, any motion to close, move for final adoption?
Motion.
Motion made and second, clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Borabasko?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mulheim?
Yes.
Ordinance 3425 is adopted.
Ordinance 35-25. Orders are possible adoption. A bond ordinance to authorize the improvement of Sycamore Drive from Hickory Court to Chestnut Street, the Pan Avenue from Union Avenue to Adelaide Street, and Essex Street from Washington Avenue to Linden Avenue in and by the township of Belville in the county of Essex, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $1.375 million to pay the cost thereof, to appropriate a state grant to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Need a motion of open public commenting.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Borabasko?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mulheim?
Yes. Now, open public commenting on this ordinance, this ordinance only. Anybody on the phones for this ordinance? Hearing none, seeing none, any motion to close, move for final adoption? Clerk call or roll.
Oh, we have motion, clerk.
Too slow. We have a motion made and second. Now clerk, call or roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Borabasko?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mulheim?
Yes.
Ordinance 3525 is adopted.
Orderance 36-25. Orders are possible adoption. A bond ordinance to authorize the improvement of Charles Street in and by the township of Belville in the county of Essex, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $900,000 to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment, to appropriate a federal grant to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Need a motion to open public commenting.
Motion.
Second. Motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Borabasko?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mulheim?
Yes. Open public commenting for this ordinance, this ordinance only. Anybody on the phones for this ordinance, this ordinance only? Hearing none, seeing none, any motion to close, move for final adoption? Clerk call or roll.
I tried to leave you this time.
Need a motion.
Motion.
Motion made. Any second. We've done this before. A motion made and second, clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Borabasko?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mulheim?
Yes.
Ordinance 3625 is adopted.
Ordinance 37-25. An order for possible adoption. A bond ordinance to authorize the improvement of Center Street in and by and for the township of Belville in the county of Essex, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $900,000 to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment, to appropriate a federal grant to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Need a motion of open public commenting.
Motion.
Second. The motion made and second, clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Borabasko?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mulheim?
Yes. We are now open for public commenting on this ordinance, this ordinance only. Anybody on the phones? Hearing none, seeing none, any motion to close, move for final adoption?
Motion.
Second. The motion made and second to close, move for final adoption? Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Borabasko?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mulheim?
Yes.
Ordinance 37-25 is adopted.
Next. Ordinance 38-25. Orders for introduction. An ordinance, amending ordinance 26-25. Fixing personnel positions, salaries, wages, and compensation amounts and rates. Need a motion for introduction?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion made and second for introduction. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Borabasko?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
Mayor Mulheim?
Yes.
Ordinance 3825 is introduced.
Can we have a list of edits, deletions, new entries? Anything that came up in the meantime? Yep.
We did send it, but I'm sorry.
It wasn't highlighted in my packet.
It's yellow.
Why not?
It's yellow on the PDF, it's not on the paper, I can't get on paper.
Clerk office doesn't have your copy.
You get a PDF when it's yellow.
So you said you sent it, where'd you send it?
We usually send it to...
Did you send it, or you usually send it? I'm trying to look, hear specific words. First thing you said it, now you said you usually send it.
He sent it.
He sent it.
He sent it.
Highlight it with difference.
In yellow. Unfortunately, when I print, it prints in black, it doesn't reflect. Oh, we're getting there, we're gonna get a copy here.
I promised you one, yes.
Thank you.
And Albert, just so you know, I noticed multiple...
2025.
Albert, just so you know, I noticed multiple brand-new copiers in the finance department. Yes. So perhaps the clerk's office...
Look at my shirt, look at finance. We're getting there, we're getting there.
You get your name on yours, so we don't have to call you clerk. Ordinance 39-25. Orders for introduction and ordinance amending chapter 13A-9 of the Code of Township Belville Uniform Fire Safety Act. Need a motion to introduce?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion made and second to introduce. Clerk call or roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Borabasko?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mulheim?
Yes.
Ordinance 3925 is introduced.
Perfect. Next up? Really nice copy, by the way. Really nice.
We need speed too, it's too yellow, we have to do it too yellow. I'm not here, you're calling it yellow.
What can be good highlights?
Next on my agenda, need a motion to open public commenting.
Motion.
Clerk call or roll. Second.
Wait, I need a second.
I don't know why I never do that.
Second.
I need a motion, we have one.
Councilmember Casarelli? Second. Second. Councilmember Casarelli? Yes. DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Borabasko?
Yes.
Mondo?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mulheim?
Yes. We are now open for public commenting. Frantoni?
My name is Philomena Frantoni, not Phyllis.
I said Ms. Frantoni.
Okay, you call me by my first name, I don't mind. All right. On June 10th, I worked the polls at 522 Portland Street. And I would like to know who changed the place, changed to go there from Fussman Church.
So the answer is the same answer that the township said in our social media, So the answer is the same answer that the township said in our social media, on our website, in a letter that was mailed to everybody, in a letter that was mailed to everybody from the county, and in the sample ballot, it was a decision made by the state and the county.
Okay, because they told, because I was told it was you that sent the letter.
I'm sure you did.
No, they said your name is on it. We...
Wait, wait, wait. That is correct. I sent the letter explaining to everybody that it was the county's decision and why the county made the decision, and I was helping notify residents.
Okay, fine. When the guy that came to Fussman Church, came to vote from Fussman Church, he said he didn't even know about it until the last minute. There was no notice on the door because people do not read the website or their mail. So finally, somebody put a little notice up there that it was moved to 522 Portland Street.
Well, there was actually large sandwich signs that were there. I know that because I drove by to specifically make sure the county did that.
Okay, whatever.
I thought you were curious about the answer.
No, I'm not. I'm not. What I'm curious is I hope we go back to Fussman Church. That place, we had four districts in it, in that little room with no windows. The voting machines were stuck in the corner. You couldn't maneuver around them. People were complaining because there was no privacy. We couldn't put up all the places for them to do their ballots. They complained. They said they don't understand why it was moved. The parking down there was atrocious at Portland Street because of the gym. They couldn't park and they had to walk even further than they did when they were at Fussman Church, where they walked from their home to go vote. And everybody was complaining. They were telling me, I said, "Don't tell me. Call the town hall or call down at the Board of Election." Something's got to be done because when the election comes up for the governor and the board of that, there's no way in hell that four districts are going to vote out of that little room. The air conditioner was on during the day, but when they left for the day, the people that worked in the office, well, the air went off. So it was not a comfortable place to work in. Something has to be done to fix it. It cannot stay like that, cannot work out of there like that.
I agree with you. Thousand percent.
There's no privacy. It's terrible. So I hope we're moved back to Fussman Church.
We're probably not going to go back to Fussman Church, but I've sent at least seven or eight emails since Election Day to various county officials, CC the county executive, CC the county executive's chief of staff. I was ignored on the first seven or eight of them. The clerk himself was involved in several of my email rants to the county, saying how terrible it was, saying how we were initially toured that Casa property. We were supposed to be in two different rooms. They put us in one room. It was supposed to be proper signage at Fussman Church, which is how I know it was there because I drove in to make sure. The initial signage was nowhere near the front door. I physically moved the sandwich sign and put it in front of the correct building, a correct door for that, so I know that. To date, I have not gotten a proper explanation from the county. I stood right there two years ago when the county did our municipal election, and I asked the Board of Freeholders or the commissioners to speak so I could complain about how terrible our elections are. They said no. They asked me to put in an email. I would get a meeting. I put seven or eight emails together at that time, never got a response. Today, this past time around, I spent, I sent about five or six more. I'm hoping to get a response, but tomorrow I do have our mayor's call, which I will certainly bring it up, but I've been ignored too. It's a terrible location. It shouldn't be. But Fussman, I get it, was more convenient. I get it. People like it. I liked it. But it's very dark. There's no handicap accessibility.
Yeah, there's handicap. There's still handicap on the side of it. That's...
There's some electricity too.
There's lighting.
There were several issues with electricity.
Police departments put flares out in the middle of the street. It's pitch black in November. I don't like change. Nobody here likes change. I get it. But the county and the state made a decision. We have to find a better location or they, at worst, have to open up both sides of Casa, which was planned. They did a terrible job. And then that's the facility side of it. I can go on and on and on. You see my emails about how they turn people away who are unaffiliated, how they tell people, they kick people out of line at 8 o'clock when there was a line to vote. They kick people out. I have a whole list of complaints to how terrible the county runs our elections. I don't know who else to tell because I've been ignored by everybody at the county.
Well, I called down there and I got to speak to somebody and they did listen to me for what I did tell them. So hopefully, they'll get back to you. I know they'll... He said he will get back to me, the one person that I did speak to. So after maybe everything is solved, he will, but we cannot...
I, it's a terrible...
We cannot, we cannot do it all.
And the privacy issue is a whole other issue. Our county decided to go away from machines and make you vote basically by mail, in person.
No, 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 no. I don't want to do by mail. It's a...
No, no. I said you do by mail, in person, which means you just go out. Other counties do it differently. Again, it's a county decision. I'd be happy to go to a freeholder meeting next time to yell at them some.
Well, I hope it gets corrected because it is terrible. And I wanted to ask, when our public works guys go into the yard, do they wash the trucks?
Sometimes. But I do need you to wrap up. Do you know?
I know. I know. I got to wrap up, but I got one more thing to say. Regardless of anything, I mean, when my husband was in office, we had, there was a supervisor there, and I'll mention his name. His name was Tony Caruso. Those guys would come in with the truck. They couldn't get at, they couldn't park until they washed it. If you look around at other towns, at their vehicles, they're clean and they look nice. And that has a lot to do to say about what our town looks like.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Gary?
I just wanted to say Philomena.
I have questions about the Fairway Park. I've been asking you to open it up for the playground for the kids. Everybody's asking when we're going to open it so their kids could go in there and play. We ripped out a perfectly, a perfect basketball court. There was arcades, the poles and everything. I've never seen one built constructed so well. They ripped them out, one, two, three, ripped the park apart and everything. Why did we lose the grant?
It's been explained multiple times over multiple council meetings, Brian. If you can give a quick summary, though?
The question was having to...
I don't think we lost it. We're choosing not to use the grants.
We didn't ask for it.
Why did we need the grant? Why did we need the grant?
The grant originally was going to fund 75% of the entire project, which was under a million dollars. Then they wanted us to do some bore sampling, which four feet down, they found some historic fill, which had some light contaminants in it equal to if you burn something on your grill, right? So the Green Acres basically will not fund unless we remediate. The remediation cost was going to be another $1.2 million, something like that, that we have to fund out of pocket. So it wasn't happening.
So why wasn't this year checked out beforehand? Our town engineer knows about the fill that was dumped there from the town. They took it from one site and they dumped it in there quite a few years back. He was at the graveyard across the way. Why all the illegal dumping done? We've got a town engineer that's not looking out for the town's interest. All right, now the whole summer is gone and just about gone without the kids being able to play in that park. You want to put vegetable gardens in there, uncontaminated soil. You just want to put a walkway around the edge of the river that's only going to get washed out from the water because the graveyard filled in so high. Going to wash that new walkway out. There's no planning here. There's fail to plan, plan to fail. All right? I don't understand why the government entity is not taking care of things properly. Taking one step at a time. You see what it's going to cost and you apply to the grant and then we lose it. Now the town's got to pay for it.
I don't think any of that last statement is true, but...
Do you think?
I don't think any of that last statement is true. We didn't apply for it and lost it. When you apply for it, they make you do certain things. Doing those certain things is what found the historic fill. That is not recent, by the way. It's 60, 70, 80 years old. Then they told us, as the manager said, it was going to cost us $1.1 million or so, and that's the beginning number, by the way, to not do any improvements, just dig down four feet. We opted not to do that and fix it ourselves with our own money.
So why you rip out a perfect basketball court, first thing they tore you, and they're brand, they're brand new?
The basketball court was always moving because it doesn't offer access to the baseball fields. You can't get a truck, a DPW truck, through it to maintain the baseball fields, which is why the baseball fields were historically not...
Why you couldn't ride over the basketball court?
Not the brand new court, no.
That's why it was all broken.
That's why it was all broken.
Because they did and they broke it.
Anybody else in public comment?
Let me just say the last thing. I'd just like to know if you're going to open that one second so the kids replace you before the summer's over.
But if you, I mean, I know you're here for the whole meeting. If you listened to the meeting, it was in the manager's report. He gave the timeline, the dates, the proposed dates and everything, and that's not the first time we've heard that. So I get you like to ask that question every time you come, but the answers haven't changed.
They will be opened immediately as soon as we get the project restarted. All they have to do is finish some things with it, fence everything off, and then we can open that first. I hope so.
Sorry, Rob?
Rich Finian, 279 Fairway. I've been talking to some people around by me in Riverdale, and they're telling me that the town is going to start trapping the feral cats out of over there and then euthanize them.
Stop listening to people in the neighborhood.
Okay, that's why I...
I'm glad you're here to ask the question, although that's better than social media. So I will say that more than likely, your neighbors are better than social media, but most are usually wrong. Why are we going to trap and euthanize cats? No.
No, okay, good.
Thank you for coming and asked that question.
Yeah, because people tell me they take care of them. They got houses for them.
Yes.
Feed them and they're nourished. So, okay, thank you.
Sir?
Just to follow up, the Fairway fiasco seems to be just what we continue to do. We fail to maintain our properties and it's a disgrace. On Election Day, I went to vote. I voted the wreck house. On the way out, I met Dr. Lynn. We were talking in the hall there, and I was telling that the... No, he said, "It's really a wreck house," with a W, I think he meant. And the plaster's falling off the wall. And I said, "This is a maintenance problem that they do not take care of." And then I don't know if you looked around, but right here, a developer stood a couple of years ago and said he wants to build, I don't know, 38 or 40 apartments on there and all.
Oh, that's not after it, but continue.
He was standing right here, and he said that he wants the wreck house and all. So it's public record, and I have some minutes of that meeting when it was setting off. This needs maintenance. Now, I can't understand, nothing's done. I'm going to give you some pictures. I was only in office three years and two months. Town employees are having to do everything. The wreck house was all cleaned up. We did a total renovation. You'll see it. We had two basketball courts there. Soon as I got out of office, I don't know, they were gone. And I gave, I'm going to give you some pictures here. There's the basketball court. The new one's there. A couple of years ago, I gave similar pictures, but after they were striped to Mr. Graziano, that meeting. He was supposed to be, just like I did now, pass them to the council. I don't think he would pass. At the end of May, I went up there, never left the meeting. Those pictures disappeared. You look at the stadium picture there.
You a magician? You didn't pass them and they disappeared?
Well, I don't know if you passed them or who got them out there, but at the end of the meeting, I went up. I asked everybody. I looked over there. Those pictures disappeared. The stadium, you see pictures there. Under the stadium, there's a weight room. You see the disgusting thing that was over there. You see the after pictures, beautiful. Town employees did that. We didn't go out to bid. Town employees did that.
Last time that was renovated this way, Mr. Strumalo got a crew of people, because I was a bump in that back, because I was a junior bump president. So, I don't know.
You're right. You're right, but that was after.
The town helped him out. He had, he had parents help clean that whole facility up.
And him, with Jeff Manningly, built the cabinets and all that. Yes, that was later. That was the initial restoration we did, the big job and all. And then later on, a few years later, they volunteered and they did that. You're right. But now everything is falling apart. Now, the wreck house, you see the renovation. There's, I have more pictures. We did everything in their wreck house. There was a new wall put up. There used to be a wall. You're from the wreck house, a four-foot wall. The kid used to fall down. And again, the engineers and the architect, "Oh, well, we have to build a new wall." I said, "Wait a minute." I went and measured it. From the building to the parking lot area is three feet. Why do we need the wall? And so you're seeing the picture. All we did is grade it. So that, all you do is, I don't understand. It's... First of all, a little compliment I should have give, the pothole on Holm Street, finally, I seen this week, you fixed it after about seven years. It's a little smoother going over there. But this is, we put an addition on the senior citizen building, under budget and under the timeframe, two months earlier than what was supposed to be put on. And then we saved. There was this Formica paneling. Now, I just turned it inside. I thanked Mr. Banda. He called me back the other day and we were talking about it. That is the 404 system by Formica. I don't know if Mr. Contraig knows about it. When Formica came out with that, they said lifetime guarantees. That's been there. When we put the addition, we had the contractor take it down from the one wall, and then we put it back up on the two side walls. Now I understand you want to put sheet rock over it. It's the worst thing.
I do need you to wrap up, Mr. Frank Antoni. Thank you.
All right. You want to put sheet rock? Do the walls at the wreck house. The other thing I noticed, I was talking to Dr. Lynn, and I said, "Yeah, we put new bathrooms in here." I opened the door. The bathrooms are gone. Now, town, but we put new bathrooms on the first floor in the wreck. As soon as you walk in, that first door, the two bathrooms, two toilets with partitions with two sinks in there. But the kids, the bathroom, they have that building up there.
We're well aware of what you did 40, 50 years ago.
Who put, who ripped the bathroom out?
Not sure. Thank you. Every time you...
None, something's got to be done.
Okay.
So the wreck house can be fixed up. When we did it, the engineers at time, when we got that grant, that building is structurally sound. Don't try to interrupt because you don't want to hear the truth.
You're out of time.
That building is structurally sound.
Thank you.
It's intentional neglect to give it to a developer. Now, somebody got to find out what happened to the bathroom, brand new bathroom.
Brian, find out about the bathrooms. You're out of time, Mr. Frank Antoni. You're out of time. Thank you. Anybody else in public comment? Mr. Frank Antoni, Mr. Frank Antoni, you're out of time, Mr. Frank Antoni. You're out of time. You're out of time.
You're neglect, you don't want to hear about it.
Don't make me make you a paper.
You don't want to hear about the neglect that's going on under your administration.
Next meeting, you have five minutes to talk about all the neglect you want. Mary, anybody else?
Five minutes every month because you don't want to hear. You stop too...
Start that next meeting. You have five minutes.
Question. All the town vehicles that are registered and owned by the town superbelver, who keeps track of them? Number one, who keeps track? How do they get gasoline?
So, Mary, how about you answer all your questions and then we'll get you the answers when you're done.
I know you're not going to give me the right answer, but I'm going to give you my questions. Okay. Specifically, vehicle...
Can't wait to answer them now.
I'm talking. You're not, you don't have to be rude. How do you keep track of these vehicles, number one? Especially your vehicle, which I did in Oprah on May 16, 2025. I asked for 2024 expenses, gas, tolls, maintenance, insurance, and the response was, "There is no record." So do you own that vehicle privately, and are you paying for the gas and insurance as another perk that the council didn't give you? It's supposed to be an OEM vehicle, but there aren't emergencies every day. It's quite evident that you sometimes flash the lights, like we're supposed to do that. And you were in freehold one day. You did an announcement for Jack Cittarella, and I have to pay, who paid for that, the tolls and traffic, and put the police officer to get there. That's number one. Number two?
That's number one? Because there were a bunch of questions for that. That's number one?
I'm not done. I'm not done. You told me to answer my, yes, my questions, and that's what I'm telling. On March 31st, 2022, I brought to the former manager's attention that on Belville Avenue ahead in East were two political billboards. Ordinance number 23175 says they are not permitted. On 11124, I asked again about my original complaint. Did an Oprah on 123. Oh, we need clarification. Every time I ask, there's something else coming. I never get a solid answer of why that violation is allowed to exist till today. Mr. Iacono mentioned to me once that was given to an outside attorney, but nowhere in my responses did anybody say to me, "Hey, an outside attorney." And nobody even bothered to check those violations of those billboards. And then, I believe, two meetings ago, when there was no recording conveniently on record, the director of the library was here and spoke at Lent with some serious allegations. I'm just wondering if that is being, if those allegations are being investigated. But the problem we have here is only what people heard and all of you heard. So I'm wondering if anybody is investigating it because what I heard, at least I think I heard, there were serious allegations that would have to go to the Attorney General's office. And also, one more thing. The vehicle, the bike ride. Every year, I come up here and I ask the same thing. Why can't everybody have a helmet on? Sure enough, no helmets. And I'm standing there because I happen to go to the drugstore. And the vehicle that you ride, make sure that has a license plate on it next time. Oh, okay. And the other thing, one more item. I'm glad you're finally showing your true colors. You're commenting freehold in May. We need to turn New Jersey red. So I just wish you'd just admit it and say, and don't be ashamed to say you're really a Republican, which you don't want to. But again, in Belville, we have no room for kings.
How about you give some answers? Brian, so we have a few seconds left. I wrote down some of the questions. So do I own the vehicle? The answer is no. You mentioned battery problems with Oprah. As you're well aware, the state has remedies for that. You can definitely contact the state and have those remedies dealt with. Allegations from the library director, I don't believe there's any investigation into that. Bike ride, the chief is here, so I guess we could admonish the chief if we need to, but his officers do a great job trying to hand out helmets and does all that great stuff. The vehicle that I was in for the, for the bike did not require a helmet, actually.
I didn't say helmet. I said license plate.
Oh, got it. Chief, maybe we'll issue a ticket to Motorcycle Mall who donated their vehicle for that, if you're so inclined. That's all the questions I had. Brian, do you have anything else?
No, I don't think anyone directed at me, so.
Anybody else in public comment?
Good evening again. Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. As I said earlier, the same thing we were dealing with the first bond ordinance. I would appreciate it if periodically Mr. Di Maria could give the community update on the total current bond and note that, doesn't have to do it tonight, but I don't know if he has those numbers in his favor, just if, every now and then, every two, three months, if he could give us an update on that, I think he would...
I'd rather you explain it because he seems to get it wrong a lot, according to what he writes on social media about our bond capability and our bond capacity. I'd rather you just say it rather than handle it.
One of the things on AMA, which is the way you sell your bonds.
Well, I think you've been corrected on numerous occasions by Mr. Di Maria. On one time, did you go back online and correct your comments?
No, because all I'm referring to is the bond, the bond, the bond situation.
I'm just curious because you make statements online, but then you get corrected and you don't actually change them.
Jerome Boncel. I'm cleaning my time. Thank you. All right, so I have a few comments to make regarding the work session topics. First of all, Mr. Rosiano, Mr. Vena, I'm glad that you're moving to do onsite simultaneous recordings for those meetings. I was really shocked to learn from both of you recently, after what happened a couple of months ago, that there was no provision to do onsite recordings, you know, depending on live streams. I'm glad that you're now resolving that. Ms. Porrasco, you mentioned about Leonard utilized property on Mill and Harrison. You said you were just throwing out an idea. I posted on Facebook the other day that maybe the time has come to take another look at the property constituting the senior center. I'm not advocating getting rid, getting rid of it, but that's a two, according to New Jersey property records, that's a 2.5 acre site, and I think it's really underutilized. I think the building's old, apparently has lots of problems with air conditioning and other utilities. Maybe the time has come to get some of the planners involved, take a closer look at how that property could be better used, not only to better support our seniors, but to turn it into a community center and possibly, there's enough space there to put the long coveted community pool, indoor pool on the site.
I'm not sure that's all that coveted. I think a few people, I think a few people on social media want it, but I don't think it's coveted.
You're on social media more than I am, so you know that a lot of residents, especially this time of the year, keep asking where's the pool?
Until they get the bill for, yeah.
But you can, you can win for lots of other things, but sever the stuff that the residents actually want. Mr. Velez mentioned about finally live streaming, planning board, zoning board meetings. Sure you're aware that for the last 15 years, it's a completely voluntary service. I have recorded just about every single planning, zoning board meeting. It's on my YouTube channel. There are nearly 500 videos there. So maybe if the time ever comes, you guys start doing live streaming, terrific, and I won't have to continue that site, that YouTube project much longer. I also want to thank Mr. Banda. I had asked him at a recent planning board meeting to periodically remind the community about the development fund, and I'm glad you're following up on that. The last thing I want to talk about tonight, should change gears. You're probably all aware that one of our most respected, well-known teachers, Deanna Arena, filed a major lawsuit against the Belville Board of Ed yesterday.
I'm not aware.
Well, it's on my website. It's on my Amity House page.
Probably why I'm not aware. Neither of us recognize that name.
Well, Deanna Arena is the vice president of the BDA Teachers' Union. She's been very active in Belville for our 21 years as a teacher. But she filed a lawsuit on Monday alleging some really horrible things that have been taking place against her, hostile work environment, sexual harassment, intimidation, many other things. But may say, "Well, why are you talking about this here? It's the Board of Education." Well, I would ask all of you to take a look at her complaint, page 7, at item 43. And I'm not going to read the names, the three named defendants. I'm not going to read their names tonight. I just want to quickly read this and explain why I'm mentioning this here in this chamber tonight. 43, defendants X and Y took advantage of their relationship within the police department to have plaintiffs' police report altered internally to remove facts and details surrounding defendant X's attack on plaintiff. 44, attempted to have the accurate details of the incident report, plaintiff returns to the police station three times. 45, subsequently, it was uncovered that defendant X used an internal police code to unlawfully obtain information relating to plaintiff's police report via an open public records request.
I do need you to wrap up.
Yes. 46, the Belville Police Internal Affairs Department investigated the circumstances surrounding plaintiff's police report, and ultimately, the matter has been referred to the Essex County Prosecutor's Office.
Thank you.
But there's more to this story that I'll talk about in the coming weeks.
Probably a lot more. I'll just caution everybody, these are allegations, and I've seen our share of lawsuits in this township, and allegations can be far, far and wide.
Deanna has, has all the evidence with the help of Internal Affairs.
I don't know why you're telling this government body.
Well, it'll become apparent in very short order why I'm mentioning this tonight because this council may be indirectly involved with some of this.
I'm shocked. I'm not named, actually. Thank you. Anybody else in public comment?
Laugh, Mr. Martino.
Thank you.
You know what? Start practicing the words true bill. It's coming.
Thank you. Okay. Always maintain.
Good evening. Hello, Flashman, Adrian Street again. First of all, congratulations to the new deputy mayor. Always fabulous. Okay, a couple of questions. The first thing is with the announcements of the meetings. I know the Star Ledger is not posting, you know, printing any every day now. And when did that stop? February? Have you heard anything? Has the town heard anything about, you know, how that's going to be resolved?
The state's been working on... The state's been working on various solutions. I haven't, I haven't heard anything concrete.
Okay. Second thing, whatever happened to the Great Bond debacle word?
Nothing. Gold, woods, ball moved along.
So, because, you know, the, I know the people were here like one or two meetings, so is it, has the town taken that over yet, or is it still?
Just a quick update. That's still pending.
Oh, okay.
It takes some time. There had to be a new, because the appraisal was so old that township had, it had to be reappraised and there's very few appraisers, if you have one that was appointed by RFP, but there's very few appraisers in the state that do those kind of appraisals.
Okay.
That's why it's taken so long.
All right, still about the two meetings a month. It would be interesting to address. It would be interesting to bring that up to the next re, you know, reevaluation of the yearly, you know, thing. Or if you want to keep it at once a month, give us at least ten minutes. If you're cutting the meetings in half, you shouldn't cut the time. Because again, if you're doing once a month, where things come up in the month and, you know, people need more time. Resolution, the consent agenda, double A, about the red leveling board. We finally have a full staff, yay, on that. And, you know, our, our secretary Nicole is phenomenal. She takes care of everything very, very efficiently, except for coffee, she's a patron. She's a barista, just, you know, I was gonna say. And just to give you a fair warning, Mr. Martino. You know, you know, you're sorry. Yeah. Mr. Vena has already mentioned about the senior bidding. I ran into somebody who said that she put in an application and she never heard. Without, I mean, do you know, like, who applied for it?
Yeah, we have about eight people. Anyone we didn't hear? We have about eight people. We didn't, she didn't hear anything back yet, because, like I just said, we didn't send it in yet. So, I wanted to give a little bit more time, let the application process continue a little longer, because at last meeting, we only had, I think, three people that applied. So, I wanted to give it more time to get more people, five, we got it up to eight.
Oh, okay.
Which I think is good, it gives a nice pool. So, I'll, I'll speak to the director there and I'll hand it off to the council, let them make a final decision over the next meeting or after that, I'll give it.
Okay. And finally, there was a Facebook post listed about the pledge that a certain individual came up with many years ago, and then is sent to everyone who is running for a seat on the boards or anything like that. It was very interesting that the creator of that pledge was not cited in that Facebook page too. Because the creator of that pledge, that it is absolutely your right to sign it, to not sign it. Because again, all it is, is just basically saying, "If you're gonna start something in the town, finish it." And again, everybody has their own agenda, everybody has their own political aspirations. I'm not saying that it's right if certain people don't, you know, fuck, sign it, if certain people resign it. That's fine, that's all you're right. But to give the proper credit, it was my husband, Frank Flesch, who came up with the pledge. So, I'd like that corrected. Thank you.
And anybody else in public comment? Hearing none, seeing none, anybody on the phones? No? Okay. Does any motion to close public comment?
Motion.
Motion made, and secondly, close public comment, clerk call her all.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Corabasco?
Yes.
Moldro?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Next on the agenda is resolutions, consent agenda. Give that one minute for everybody to pick through it again. I'm taking T, T, U, and V. Albert?
T.
T, one thirty-six, one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight. Just a roll call vote, individually announced.
Don't we have to take out double A? It's empty?
Double A?
Another empty one?
Double A.
Oh, eagle eye, again. That's a placeholder when Frank doesn't get his stuff in on time, Albert slides it in. But that didn't happen, so. We're gonna take that off, so that we can slide anything in there, so. Double A as well.
Double A is at the beginning of the agenda.
That's right.
That's the appointment.
I was gonna explain that to the deputy mayor.
Yeah, you gotta be consistent.
I figured if I didn't put a double A there, then we're gonna say any of my alphabet.
I like that, I like that, I like that we're thinking, as long as we're thinking, it's okay.
We're thinking.
Anybody else?
Would you, N, O, P?
Say it again.
N, O, P. Anybody else? No, hearing none, all it's an emotion to move the consent agenda with the exception of N, O, P, T, U, V. Double A stays.
Motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Move consent agenda, clerk call her all.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Corabasco?
Yes.
Moldro?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Councilman Velez? Sorry. Okay, so that we're, do you factor that together, right? They're yours. N, O, P, what do you want to do? Discussion? Individual, N, O, P, but no discussion. So, just a roll call vote on those as a group? Yep. Need a motion to move them separately, each individual. Oh, so not as a group? No, not as a group. All right, so we're gonna do N. The motion for N.
Motion. Second.
Motion made, N, second, clerk call her all. This is the reappointment of our township attorney, everybody.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Corabasco?
Yes.
Moldro?
I abstain.
Velez?
Abstain.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
We want to discuss the abstains? Do you have any justification or?
No.
No? Don't want to vote no, though, just abstain?
That takes away a little bit of time.
How about?
Oh. So, by the way, that resolution is adopted.
Congratulations, D.
Thank you.
O. Just a roll call?
Yep.
Need a motion for O.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made, N, second, clerk call her all.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Corabasco?
Yes.
Moldro?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Why, why do we pull that?
I just think that these should be separate from the consent agenda.
But that's not how it works, though. For the future, it's not how it works. If it's unanimous votes or consent agenda, you pull something off to either discuss it or to vote no or to abstain for it. D. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made, N, second, clerk call her all.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Braziano?
Yes.
Corabasco?
Yes.
Moldro?
Yes.
Velez?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Resolution one thirty-one, twenty twenty-five is adopted, and resolution one thirty-two, twenty twenty-five is adopted.
So, we pulled off N, O, and P, but you didn't pull off Q. Do you not think that deserves a town vote? Without a term?
No.
Yeah, it's just very, very inconsistent to think that certain attorneys need certain votes and other attorneys don't need certain votes. Either they need certain votes or they don't. Okay. T, U, and V, need a motion to move T, U, and V together.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made, N, second, clerk call her all.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Take no part. Just look at licenses, thanks, but I do work for some licenses.[1648.84]